Recording in progress.
Evening, everyone. It is now seven o'clock PM, and I would like to welcome you all to the Richland County zoning public hearing for Tuesday, July 26, 2022. This meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, if you would, please take the role.
Malinowski.
Here.
Pew.
Here.
McBride.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Terracio.
Here.
Walker. Baron.
Here.
O'Walker.
Present.
Mackey.
Here.
English.
Present.
Newton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
And also, I spoke with Councilman Joe Walker, and he let me know this afternoon that he is away on business. He wishes he could be here with us, but he is away on business. In fact, I believe he's out of state. So, next item on the agenda is item three. Any additions, deletions to the agenda? Mr. Price?
No, sir.
As well as any members from the body. Okay, right now, entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
I move, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Second.
Move to properly second. Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Terracio.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Approved.
Next item on the agenda is item five. Not too great with my Roman numerals, so I had to look at that a little longer. But it's our public hearing. Public hearing is now open. First item is item A1. That's case number 22007 MA, Lucky Diddy. It's 116 Beatty Downs Road, TMS number R06106-01-39. Planning Commission recommended disapproval. Staff recommended disapproval as well. That public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We have the applicant here that signed up to speak, and then we have one individual that signed up for or in favor of. So first is Lucky Diddy. If you would, come forward to one of the mics. State your first and last name, as well as your address, and you'll have two minutes to speak. I'm sorry, sir. You can...
Right, we'll do it again. Thank you all for tonight. My name is Lucky Diddy. I live at 1103 Greenville Circle, Columbia, South Carolina, ZIP code 29210. I'm going to read a statement here. "Oh, I'm the lead pastor and director of operations at Reconciliation Ministries. Reconciliation Ministries unites with donors, volunteers, and advocates to provide a platform that enables those suffering from addiction to experience life-changing hope, healing, and reconciliation to God, themselves, and others. RM provides food, clothing, and housing to its students as part of this process while also seeking to make an impact on the Beatty Downs community as a whole. RM currently owns seven of the 25 multifamily apartment buildings in this community with a plan to purchase the remaining 18 buildings within the next three years to increase our student capacity, to enhance local partnerships, and continue to facilitate opportunities for affordable housing. The rezoning request would allow 116 Beatty Downs Road to serve as our kitchen space after all required zoning improvements were completed. The kitchen would not be open to the public, nor would it act as a restaurant in any capacity. The kitchen would serve the needs of RM students, approximately 50 meals a day that we already cook for the students just in separate locations, and act as an outreach space to help meet the needs of the community whenever possible. It is important to note that the Beatty Downs community is located within the confines of what is known as a food desert. At a minimum, RM seeks to provide weekly meals to this community free of charge in an attempt to build relational equity within this community while also meeting the desperate need for food assistance in an underserved community." I don't know how much time I have left, so... Twenty-six seconds. So, just say yes. Come on. I put a tie on and everything. No, that's it. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Next is Ralph Walden, signed up for this project. Ralph Walden, if you would, state your first and last name, address, and you have two minutes.
My name is Ralph Walden. I live at 279 Woodwinds Drive, Columbia, South Carolina. I am the architect that has been working alongside this ministry for the last several years on a number of different upfits of residential and commercial facilities. I wanted to speak just a moment. I actually brought a plan. Mr. Price said it's not about the plan today, but I do want to tell you that the building that we are looking at utilizing for the purposes of feeding the students in this program, and that's all. This is not a restaurant. It will not be open to the public. There's nothing about that. This allows students with vehicles that Restoration or Reconciliation Ministries operates with, they bring the students to the facility, and they would take them back to their living condition. Within that space that we're looking at, our first area would hold only 25 people at a dining area with renovations. There would be some commercial kitchen facilities, obviously, for food preparation. And one of the other ministries that they do is they feed many, many people so that the kitchen would also serve the ministry to facilitate feeding, preparing meals, and then carrying them off-site to other locations so they could be able to serve other people in the areas of need. And I'm just here as architect. I've worked with Pastor Lucky on a couple of other projects, and we see this as something that will meet the needs of the community. I read the conclusion. This is not what most people would say is a commercial enterprise in that that needs to be located in a particular area of the development or in the area of the Pine Grove area. This actually is not going to be commercial in that people will come to it. It is a place where only students that live in the immediate area will come and eat, and then they will also be able to carry food out into other areas of ministry. Do I have any time left? Thirteen seconds. I want to thank you for your consideration tonight. Appreciate the time to address this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak tonight.
Who you recognize?
As well, sent in from Representative Chris Hart, who also signed up, well, wrote a letter against this request as well. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals. Sorry, do you see Larry?
Did anyone?
That concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak on this issue.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
You recognize Ms. McBride?
I'm going to make a motion for denial of the requests from residential, single-family, medium to GM. And the reason why is that the intensity of the permitted use within the GC designation are not compatible with the established use along this portion of Mason Road. Also, as has already been said, although that the GC's GC zone parcelled east of this site, the appropriate transition is from fair fair road should provide for zoning designations, which he's requesting. And last but not least, I want to, I'm denying this because the community fully does not support the change. And they love their community and they have worked very hard to keep this community safe. Unlike the Planning Commission and Navy Staff, they do not live in the community, they do not feel the community, and they do not know the history of the community and what the commercial zoning could do. I'm gonna be very brief, Mr. Chair, but Sheriff Lot and Chief Hallbrook have worked with this community just recently to clean out a store that was selling alcohol and everything. And the amount of crime is unbelievable. And it has taken this community years to get this clean and to get those license revoked. This community does not deserve to have that happen to them again. And we want to keep it as a residential area, we want to keep it a livable and healthy community. So my recommendation is that I move, I make a motion to deny.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. And so just so the body is clear, your motion is for denial. So a yes vote on your motion would be denied and a no vote on your motion would be actually accepting the recommendation from staff, right?
Yes, sir, a yes vote, is what I mean.
Mr. Malinowski, you recognized?
Hey, Mr. Chair, I'll second Ms. McBride's motion.
Remove the property second. Any discussion?
And also, I would just like to know, as the other speakers' comments are entered into the record, will we enter also Representative Hart's letter into the record?
Yes, sir, duly noted. It's made part of the record. Thank you, Ms. Malinowski. Any further discussion? All right, there being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski. Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston. Teresha.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion for denial approved.
Next item on the agenda is item A4, case number 22-011 MA. Oliver Mack, 6108 Bluff Road, TMS number R21300-01-0231 and 32. The Planning Commission recommends disapproval. Staff recommends disapproval. How, Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have two individuals that have signed up to speak. One being the applicant and the second is for this request. Starting off with Oliver Mack. If you would, state your first and last name as well as your address, and you have two minutes to speak.
All right. My name is Oliver Mack. My address is 6100 Bluff Road in Hopkins. Good afternoon. I've been in business for 17 years. I never had any complaints or violations. Of going to business, well, basically, I run a towing business and it's just gonna be business as usual. Only thing, the stipulation is that the county says that I can't store a vehicle, like one vehicle. And that makes it impossible for me to, 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 to run my business. Because I, I, I deal with the county, Highway Patrol and all that, and I have the impound vehicles sometime, and I have wrecked vehicles. And a lot of those vehicles are awaiting like disposition and stuff like that. So as part of the nature of the business, it's a towing business, you've got to do stuff like that. You have to have wrecked vehicles and stuff like that. But I understand, I'm not trying to create a junkyard or salvage yard, anything like that. I'm just storing the vehicle just temporarily for Highway Patrol in Richland County and for, and for customers, waiting disposition and insurance company. And that's it. I mean, they're not gonna be there that long. I'm not trying to create sell parts and salvage and all that kind of stuff. And I understand when you drive through the country, people don't wanna see eyesore. You know what I'm saying? They don't wanna see junkyards and cars and all that. You drive by my place right now, you won't see nothing. I always kept the grass cut. And also, before I opened my business, it was, it was zoned for rural commercial. So I had to do an engineer site plan, I had to plant all these screenings and trees, and I invested a lot of money in that. So, I mean, you know, I'm just fighting really for the survival of my business. You know what I'm saying? I don't know about the other tow companies and the shops and all that in that area. I guess they wanna be, they don't wanna be legal or whatever the case is, but I do. I wanna have my legit business. Because I'm, I mean, for the long haul, and you know what I'm saying? I invested a lot of money in my business. And, and basically, I mean, that's all, you know, I'm just fighting for my survival.
Thank you so much. That's your time.
All right.
Next person that's signed up is Centaria Hill. You would state your first and last name, your address, and you have two minutes to speak.
Okay. My name is Centaria Hill. I live at 1615 Bay Hill Road in Hopkins. The man behind Max Toin, Oliver, my brother, has served over 30 years in Army National Guard, doing tours in Afghanistan, Bosnia, Croatia, Hungary, and Germany, serving his country. He came back with a dream to open up a business in the community. He's a bit of a perfectionist, so everything has to be in order at all times. It's a military thing. Customers always compliment how well the business is kept. The community loves Max Toin. He's always there when the community calls on him. Schools, churches, festivals, parade. The ranges from the Congaree National Park patronize our business. He works with the Highway Patrol, Richland County Sheriff's Department. He's never had any fines or violations. If you drive down Bluff Road, check out 6108. You'll see that this is a man who takes pride in his business. There's a nuclear plant in the heart of our neighborhood, in the Congaree Swamp. Westinghouse is a mile up the road from Max Toin. Surely, a small family business is no threat compared to that. Nobody seems concerned about the damages doing to the environment or the people in our community. Max Toin is a pillar to our community and a business to be proud of and one of few minority businesses in our community. Oliver is paving the way for the next generation. We thank him for all that he is doing. And I ask that you please reconsider your decision, and I thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak for this item.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. At this time, I entertain a motion. You recognize Ms. English?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have spoken with all of the neighbors surrounding Mr. Oliver's, Mr. Oliver Mack's business, and they are in support of him. Even Ms. Ida Dixon, who is with Tri-County, and she has nothing but great things to say about him. He is located one mile from Westinghouse, which in this area, there is, it's unincorporated. There is no water, there is no sewer. And it is unlikely that there will be housing development that will come through with Westinghouse being there and it being a nuclear fuel division. So at this time, I am recommending approval for Mr. Oliver Mack.
Second.
Proply second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresha.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item five, which is case number 22-012 MA. Richard Hendy, just Hart Scrabble Road. TMS number R20400-01-19. Planning Commission recommends approval and staff recommends disapproval. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have one individual, the applicant, that has signed up to speak this evening. Richard Henry? If you would, state your first and last name as well as your address, and you have two minutes to speak.
My name is Richard Hendy. My address is 146 Golden Jubilee Road in Gilbert. And actually, I, I didn't really sign up to speak. I just wanted to say I was present and answering questions if you guys had any questions about the project. I realize that the, the staff recommendation, my understanding of the staff recommendation was that it was more of a terminology issue. It wasn't a usage or a, I forget the exact terminology, but there was no conflict with it. It's actually a loud usage, and we ask for your, your consideration and approval.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak on this request.
Madam Vice Chair, and if I may, you know, staff, you know, recommended disapproval, but if you look at page 35 in your agenda packet, it reads, "The requested amendment to the current Plan Development District would allow for service-oriented commercial uses for the surrounding residential areas and would be compatible with the liable," okay, that doesn't read quite well, "but within the Plan Development District and the existing surrounding development." So with that in mind, I am going to recommend approval. Remove the property second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresha.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda is item six, case number 22-013 MA. Patrick Palmer, this is 310 Killian Road, TMS number R14600-03-16. Planning Commission recommends approval. Staff recommends approval as well. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have three individuals that have signed up to speak tonight. One being the applicant and two signed up to speak against this item. First up is the applicant, Patrick Palmer. Mr. Palmer, if you would, state your first and last name as well as your address. You have two minutes to speak.
Great. Yes, Patrick Palmer, 220 Windsor Point Road, Columbia, South Carolina. Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, Counsel, thank you for the opportunity. Wanted to just rise in support of this rezoning. The staff has recommended approval. Planning Commission has recommended approval. Everything inside of this rezoning fits 100% inside the comp plan. It's actually the snuggest fit that I've ever seen in my 15 years of being up there in y'all's spots earlier on the Planning Commission. So I just wanted to be here to answer any kind of questions you guys might have. We look forward to the possibility of, of, you know, improving the intersection. So I'm just here for any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. Next up is Robert Fuller. Mr. Fuller, if you would, state your first and last name as well as your address. You have two minutes to speak.
Robert Fuller, attorney in Columbia, 1720 Main Street. I'm here representing Keith Hudson and Jim Hudson and the Hudson Automotive Group, who are the next door adjoining neighbors to this 161-acre parcel of property. The concern from the Hudson Group is that 161 acres being converted to this general commercial designation will allow for entirely too many than comfortable dwelling units. It's a general commercial zoning, but the rezoning of the entire property of 161 acres would enable over 2,500, almost 2,600 residential units on the property. It is fed directly off of Killian Road by two entry points or roads, both which run directly through the Hudson Automotive properties. And with 2,500 or whatever the ultimate number of units on that property is for residential purposes sort of defeats the general commercial aspect of the locality, the specific area, and the property itself. The Hudson Group is very concerned about the amount of traffic that would be generated by that many residents coming in and out of the property on a daily basis in mix with the automotive groups operating 250 employees and the customer base and the service responsibilities that operate and have to operate directly off of Killian Road, which is exactly where all of the residential traffic would have to enter from or depart to through the Hudson properties. So the concern is not that it is a general commercial area, but that the general commercial zoning permits what we expect to be a large preponderance of residential traffic.
Thank you so much, Ms. Fuller. Next individual signed up to speak is Karen Hems. You would state your first and last name as well as your address, and you have two minutes to speak.
It's Karen Himes, 2 Paddock Place in Columbia, South Carolina. Good evening. I'm the Vice President and CFO for Jim Hudson Automotive Group. Jim and Keith Hudson are at a college graduation tonight, or they would be here in front of you. They are greatly concerned, and they appreciate very much the burden that you have in, in deciding on such a large piece of property. I've lived in Richland County for 15 years, so I'm very familiar with Sand Hills. This piece of property is half the size of Sand Hills. And so we have three automotive dealerships that are in front of it. And as Bob Fuller said, just the two entrances in. And you know that Jim Hudson is a community supporter and definitely in favor of business. When we built those three facilities, we saw the zoning as light industrial. We presumed when we built those there that there would be light industry or commercial behind it. We had no idea that children could be riding bicycles, school buses, ambulances, fire trucks, police having access. I've spoken with the sheriff about it. He has concerns as well. We are welcome business back there. It's the number of residences that concerns us. You also know that with 162 acres, we've been working, I want to say thank you as well to Councilwoman Baron. She has been great as far as encouraging communication between us and the broker and potential developer. So we've had a good community meeting. I don't think we are ready. I respectfully ask that you deny this. We need more time because it would be one thing if 20 acres of it was designated as residential, but to think about 2,300 homes back there. I've seen it morph. We've had some conversations. Things change. And if you all say yes to GC for 162 acres, the developer can say one thing, but we don't know what really will happen. So I thank you for my time.
Thank you so much, and I apologize for the mispronunciation of your last name. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak for this item.
I might entertain a motion. Ms. Baron, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I want to, before I make my motion, just thank Mr. Palmer and the Hudson's and as well as all their team members. We have been meeting to really come up with, just to hear, have an opportunity. You all know that I believe in having communication with the community developers as well as the brokers. And we've had this conversation. The Hudson's have led it and led the charge for the community. And I feel very comfortable with the progress that's being made. However, I do think that there needs to be further conversation along the way. So because of that, while I am making a motion to, to approve this, I will not vote for it. I want it to be approved. I'm making a motion to approve it, but because I want it to go forward. But just noting that there is more conversation that needs to be had on the community level so that we feel comfortable with it. So my motion, sir, is to approve for this project to move forward.
Thank you. Karen's there second. Properly second. Any discussion? You recognize Ms. Newton?
Thank you. Quick question. So Ms. Baron, you're, you're voting to keep it off the consent agenda so that additional conversations can be had?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newton, for that clarification. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Q.
No.
McBride.
No.
Livingston. Teresha.
Yes.
Baron. O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
No.
English.
No.
Newton.
Madam Clerk, before you give us the official tally, Ms. Newton has a physical look on her face. So Ms. Newton, would you please, I guess, would you care to sort of explain the puzzled look?
Sure.
I'm not calling you out, but.
No, 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 I was puzzled. Well, my understanding of Ms. Baron's comments were that she was going to move for approval and request that the colleagues also vote for approval, which would be a yes vote, that she herself was going to vote no, which would allow this to move forward to the full council agenda, but would keep it off the consent agenda so it wouldn't automatically be approved and there would be time for additional discussion. So I guess I, I looked quizzical because I, I wanted, I thought I was supporting my colleague's motion and I was just.
I share your sentiments as well, as the vote was.
But, but the vote has been, yes.
Mr. Price also has a quizzical look on his face, so that's the word for tonight. So Mr. Price, you're recognized. You sure? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Motion fails.
Someone on the prevail.
It has to be someone on the fail inside that moves for reconsideration.
Move to reconsider.
It's been moved to properly second. Any discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Q. McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresha.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Then it's been reconsidered. It puts it back before the body. And so, and Ms. Newton, since you so eloquently laid out what the vote was, was supposed to pretend or mean, would you eloquently state that again, please?
I'll allow.
Mr. Chair, point of order here.
Yes, you recognize.
I don't believe it's up to you to direct a council member to put what they feel other council members should be doing because maybe the other council members that voted voted that way because that's how they truly felt, regardless of what Ms. Baron said.
Well, it's not that I'm trying to direct as far as how the people should vote or how they should feel, but I think what Ms. Newton was doing was actually trying to provide some clarity as to what the vote meant. Because as Ms. Baron stated, you know, she wanted it to go forward, but she was going to vote no. Now, again, maybe this is just, I guess, my experience as I've been on this body. When a council member says this is what they want to see happen, if you will, with respect to a zoning request, the practice usually has been to adhere or give deference to that council member's request. And Ms. Baron made it very clear that she wanted to go forward, but she would be a no vote. So I'm just trying to make sure this body has an opportunity to at least have their vote if they in fact wanted to give deference to Ms. Baron's request. Have that reflected in the vote, if that makes sense, so.
Yes, and I guess that's why I think that Ms. Baron should be the one to.
Okay.
Make that comment.
Well, duly noted, well, Ms. Baron, if you will.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Thank you. So I move to approve this project.
Second?
Properly second. Any further discussion? There being none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Q.
No.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresha.
Yes.
Baron.
No.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
No.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item seven, case number 22-015 MA. Brent Chitwood, that's Broad River Road, TMS number R02500-05-10. Planning Commission recommended approval and staff recommended approval. Madam Vice Chair, anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have one individual that has signed up to speak tonight, and I apologize in advance if I pronounce her last name incorrectly. Alex DiMaturoco?
Yes.
If you would, state your first and last name as well as your address, and you have two minutes to speak.
Yes, I'm, I'm the applicant. My name is Alex DiMaturoco. I live at 100 South Hudson Street, Greenville, South Carolina. And I am the developer for the property. Unfortunately, Mr. Chitwood is ill, could not be here. He is our broker locally. We have worked with staff, at least from a conceptual site, site planning standpoint, and looking for guidance on the appropriate zoning. We got their approval. We went to the Plan Commission, received their support and approval as well. I'm here mostly to answer questions, should there be any. The primary reason for asking for this change of zoning is to allow for some multifamily as well as commercial, which is consistent with what exists along Broad River Road, particularly as you go from the interchange of I-26 towards the Wal-Mart and so forth on Broad River Road. You would see fast food restaurants, DMV, different commercial outlets, and then the Palisades at Ballantyne being a multifamily property across the street. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but we'll cede my time for everybody else.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak this evening.
Right. Well, I entertain a motion. Mr. Malinowski, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the first time that anyone relating to this property that I have heard anything. It's been here two to three months. Mr. Chitwood, whose name is here, has never contacted me to indicate what they want to do. This is the first I hear this gentleman's name. They're advised by staff to contact the council representative for their district and discusses with them, which has never taken place. I would like to be able to discuss this with some of the neighbors, although there are few, but to state that this is a commercial corridor going toward the Wal-Mart is very untrue. There are no commercial entities there until you get to the Wal-Mart, which is probably three to four miles down the road. I have several questions of staff relating to infrastructure.
Malinowski, that's your two minutes. I couldn't exist, but continue on. You still have the floor.
Come on, T-Mark. And I, I'd just like to be able to discuss it further, get some additional input. SC DOT is building a huge interchange, new interchange here. I don't know how that's gonna affect this property by the time they're done. So based on all this and the questions that are unanswered yet, I would move to defer this until the September meeting.
Second.
Properly second. That's non-debatable. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski. Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Teresha.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Before we entertain a motion for adjournment, I just want to recognize our colleague, Councilman Joe Walker. He is actually tuning in virtually, although he, again, he's out of town on business. And our rules prohibit him from tuning in or participating, not tuning in, but participating virtually. But just wanted to acknowledge that he is tuning in tonight, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, move to properly second. It's non-debatable. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston. Teresha.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.